Those of you all have any questions, please let me know. And if I'm not mistaken, the reason you all just have them is that we got them on April the 4th, correct? Thank you.
Yanah, for one, who insurance agent? What do they cover? What coverage do they provide for the district?
That's the property and casualty insurance, the liability insurance.
For the district, for the whole district?
Yes.
Okay, there are no questions. We'll go ahead and move on to item 4B. Consider and take possible action on donations to Rio Grande City Gruya ISD. Those are also there for your review.
For this scholarship, which is sending the letters out, Yanah, an appreciation?
Yes.
We're good.
There are no other further questions. We'll go ahead and move on to item 4C. Consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of July 2025. And that should also be a separate handout that was given to you. No questions. Let's go ahead and move on to item 4D. Consider and take possible action on nomination of board candidates for Starr County Appraisal District's Board of Directors for the 2026-2027 term.
The Starr County Appraisal District has submitted the voting entitlement for the 26-27 Appraisal District Board of Directors. The presiding officers of the governing body must submit the names of nominees before October the 15th, 2025. So the board will select the nominees and we will send them over to the appraisal district.
How many nominees do you?
I believe there's two.
And they're currently serving?
Yes.
Do we need a change there or do the individuals that we have there, are we okay? I mean, I'd say we'd be okay with it, but I don't know about the rest.
Ms. Robles, on page 25, I see there where it says before October 15th, and we have a few names there that are current members. Are those some of the members that will be?
Yes.
Okay.
So ours are Ms. Rogério Olivares and Encarnación Sainz III.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item 4E. Consider and take possible action on proposal from Millennium Engineers Group Incorporated for additional testing for Gruya Middle School.
So this is a proposal from Millennium for the construction materials testing services for new Gruya Middle School. The estimated cost for services on this project is $7,868.30. This is a change order for additional asphalt testing. Millennium also confirmed with Gerloc that no further testing will be required for Gruya Middle School. The original agreement was in the amount of $369,566.
I know this is from bond monies, Yanah, but we had, I know we had exhausted some monies already, no? Will this be an additional cost besides the bond money?
Yes, so whatever we had allocated to other projects, we would have to reallocate the $7,868 back to Gruya Middle.
Gruya Middle.
Ms. Robles, do you think that these change orders are something common, like amongst other districts when you, you know, talk to other people? Is this something that when you're having new buildings, that change orders happen a lot? Or is it just with us so that we have an idea as board members?
I am not certain, however. The only reason that I am bringing this up is because we were going with the contract amount and they were submitting an invoice that was surpassing the total that we had already paid with that invoice. And so that's when I questioned Millennium and that's when they said that this was for additional testing services that had to be done. If not for me to let them know, I guess to stop the testing, but since I know that we wanted to complete the middle school.
Does anybody know the testing has already gone on with or not?
Mr. Favi?
The testing?
Do you know it? Millennium is done with the testing? Okay.
So how do we know there is required additional testing? Like, when do we know when to stop or when do we know when to? Is it really required that we have to do this? Okay.
The engineer is Mario Suarez. Mario Suarez is the engineer that contacted me after I questioned.
Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Garza, Superintendent of Schools, and I also just found out before the meeting what Millennium had been doing and all the other projects is they don't bill us directly. And in case with this concern here, they have always built Gerloc and then Gerloc turns around and bills us. So that's the only thing here that they came directly to us. They didn't go through Gerloc, if I'm correct.
No.
Are they subcontracted through Gerloc?
The engineer should be our responsibility to make sure that everything is up to par. And so at the beginning, it was done through Gerloc because the prior board had not approved the agreement submitted by, or the proposal submitted by Millennium. And then we approved, or the board approved this original contract and that's when it went back to billing us directly.
And, okay, and then the other thing I know in talking to Fabian usually, and I guess we would need to get legal to help us out, usually with services like this, they give you a budget, but it doesn't mean necessarily that that's what they're going to charge. In his experience, Fabian's, sometimes they're under budget, but sometimes they are over budget. So again, that's something that he's gonna, I was talking to him right before the meeting. He's going to get me, get us those answers tomorrow, hopefully.
So is this a change order? Or is this just additional services?
Yes, because I questioned the fact that that last invoice that they had submitted was going over the $369,000 in the original agreement. And so.
And that's the agreement directly with Millennium, not with Gerloc?
Right, yes.
Okay, and so we're using a change order mechanism to pay over the amount that the engineers initially quoted us to be billing?
I mean, I think what recommendations would we have or take to further look into this? Or are we, you know, obligated to pay based on what the contract states?
So, I mean, so no, so this is a change order to the contract, which means it's beyond the contract. That's why Ms. Yanah is bringing it to you. The questions that, so to Dr. Varela's first question, which was are change orders common? The answer is they can be common. They're part of any major construction project. Things change naturally as the years go by and things go in and sometimes you need additional services you didn't realize or didn't plan for. With change orders like this, what we can do is we can require the vendor to come forward to the meeting and explain why they need that change order. So for example, right now, when you ask the question, do we need that testing, right? That's an answer we should have from them. It's why do they need this testing? Is it required before you do a paving? Is it required to check soil compaction before you build something? I mean, those are basic questions that should be answered as part of it.
But has, does anybody know that this testing has been done already and they've invoiced us? Or the work is still yet to be done?
The services, I believe, had already been done.
Prior, prior to the change order?
Yes, when they sent that invoice and I questioned the amount.
So who is, so for example, do we have a project manager for this project?
Project manager?
Local? A local project manager?
Yeah, do we have like an owner's rep or anything? Or is a district handling this?
Good question. I started it and then I was not doing it and then I'm back again, so, but I didn't deal with Millennium. So that's why I was talking to Fabian about that.
Yeah, because I think if a change order is going to take place, it should take place before the work gets done.
Right.
But it has already been done and we haven't even approved the work.
Correct, the change order, then. So if the work has been done without the authorization of the district, then that's a whole different question that we can talk about, right? And who authorized them to do it if it wasn't already board approved or over the amount that we're talking about here? So the reason I ask, do we have a project manager is because in theory, projects like this should have a point person that we can call to that chair and ask, why do they need this? Why do they need that? Can you explain it? And in theory, that person should approve or not approve change orders that are coming in like this, but the work should still not be done until after the change order is complete.
So could we get, could we get them to come to our, to the, once to the next?
Of course. So this item, for example, is here at your board workshop, not for action right now. We can exclude this from the consent agenda and require that the vendor come forward to explain why the change order was required, who authorized them to do it, was it already complete, what was the reason it needed to be done, what was the reason they did it before it was approved by the board? You can ask all those questions, yes.
Well, if we can get the vendor, Marín, to come in for their next board meeting, that way we can question it. Because, I mean, I know that a job should not be done before being approved by the board. So a change order like this shouldn't have happened.
I know currently, again, since Ms. Garza took over, that I've been dealing back with the project. Fabian, Delfino, nothing, anything, like Mr. Ramírez is saying, nothing in terms of a change order, they have no say-so. They come to me and then we go through the proper channels to get it approved.
I'm not sure if this is correct, but I'm reading, Fabian, that it is field testing and they also want to do laboratory testing. So I think it's something that's already there and it's on the asphalt that they want to do, but those are good questions to.
Well, it sounds like they already did it, though. That's a problem.
Correct.
So the question is.
The testing itself?
Well, the question is, why do they do it before it was approved?
Well, it says authorization for professional services, Adolfo Peña, signed it.
But he wasn't around. Not, not, they're charging for it right now for a change order right now?
Like if they, this was?
That's dated back.
January 17th.
And they just, they just did the blacktop not too long ago, if I'm not correct. Right, how, they just did that blacktop maybe like a month and a half ago?
But this is July 8, 2025.
Of June, July? So I say, let's just get the company in, we'll question them and why that should take place.
Change orders all the time?
Yes, so the original contract was approved back in January 2024, under Mr. Peña. That was the original contract for $369,566. The reason why the change order is coming, it's because they're saying that that figure changed on the count of the new services. But the questions the district needs to ask is, when were those services performed? Who authorized the services to be performed? Why were they performed before the board approved the services? And so that's what they need to explain.
Yeah, and I'm thinking that it already happened because that blacktop has been on there for about a month already. So I don't know what kind of testing they want to continue doing on it after it's already been.
On the scope of services, on the scope of services on page 39, it's one of the things that was checked off to do, field observation. So it was already, it was already part of that.
Embedded in the contract.
So, I mean, it might be that they're not, I mean, did they say it was done or are we just?
They, they were done because they sent the invoice. And I questioned when it surpassed the total amount.
And then, did they send you this letter in response to you questioning it?
Yes, yes, when I questioned.
Okay, yeah. And then the invoice was dated when? Is it this one?
I'm gonna say, is it that one?
It says additional testing and it has an invoice, but the invoice is dated July?
It was probably May or June.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay, so then, so to your question, it was within this timeframe that someone?
It was the last part of.
Yeah. And it could be that the additional testing was required for whatever reason, right? But it still comes down to a change order should be approved by the board first, prior to the service is happening at that point.
Okay, so we'll remove this item from consent agenda and put it into action for the board meeting.
And we can request that they come forward and explain what they did here.
Okay.
And this is a good opportunity for the, for the board, as you're seeing the development of the management of the projects, that this is how projects can get out of, out of control when we don't have the proper mechanisms and controls for things to be occurring.
Okay. Move on to item 4F. Consider and take possible action on pay statement number one from Design Group International for Food Service Warehouse, which is the Payne Warehouse. Do you all have any questions for Mr. Garza?
Good evening. I'm here to answer any questions you have on this.
Mr. Garza, what was the extent of the work done for, for the Payne Warehouse? And if you can, if you can give us a detail, not a detail, but give us an idea as to what got done at the Payne Warehouse.
The Payne Warehouse has, on the far left, has got a concrete slab, wall construction that used to be a cooler. And we were asked to use that area to do the food service warehouse. In addition to that, there's an attached, also a concrete paneled wall area with roof. And that was going to be used for servicing buses. And then beyond that, there's another area that has a roof and a slab. And, and, and all three of these buildings, the floor slab is about four feet high. And then the fourth part of that building has a roof on it, but no slab. There's dirt on the bottom. And that's, that was going to be to just station buses.
So, so what were you asked to do, Mr. Garza, in regards to that? Like, the work that you're, you're charging us for, what does that, what did that work entail?
Well, before that, I think our question is, who approved that professional service? Do we have a contract? Did somebody approve this?
Yes, there's a contract on, on that Payne Warehouse that was signed.
So we do have a contract for the Payne Warehouse, not for the tractor supply? But my question is a different one, which is, so this invoice is dated July 17, 2025, even though this work probably didn't happen way a long time ago, like in 2023 or 2024?
That's correct.
So the question that I have, which is a persistent issue that we've been witnessing since we've been here in January, is that vendors keep submitting things to be paid years after the work has been done or allegedly done. And so the question I have is, why are we submitting invoices to the district three or two years later after the work is done, when we're at 25% completion on this invoice? In theory, you will be billing in increments as you're going through this project. So if you were already at 25% invoice complete, why wasn't this billed in 2024 when the work was complete? And why is it being billed now in 2025 in the summer before the new school year?
Well, what happened is, at the beginning, it was going to be a brand-new facility. And we went to see sites and where a new facility was going to be built. And then things kind of just settled, nobody asked about it. So we didn't bill for, for that, for that work. And then finally, this, this property was purchased, we did this work, and then sometime, you know, in '23, there was talk about purchasing tractor supply. And so what we did, we stopped working on it and we just left it alone.
So, and I think that's, sorry, that's kind of the hard pill for me to swallow as legal counsel for the district, which is, we're bringing in an invoice for work that was done in 2023 and expecting the district to pay it 700 days later, when if the work was done in 2023 and stopped, this should have been billed to the district at the time the work stopped, because it makes it very difficult for us to go back and properly audit whether the work was done or not two years later with differences in staff and everything like that.
All I can say is, we started looking at that building and at the beginning, the budget was over $4 million.
No, I understand that and that's not my concern.
And then we dropped it because there was concern on the budget. So we dropped the workload and the estimate. And then the tractor supply building came around, so we stopped working on it and I didn't bill it, you know? It was just that simple.
And that's really, that's really my question is, if work on this stopped in 2023 and that we're not going to keep going, then why not submit the bill to the district at that time and why wait two years later? I'm just saying it's a little unfair to the district now to be submitting it.
We didn't get any directions on, on how this was going. We were asked to go see the tractor supply and we were actually asked to start working on it and we did. So.
But there was no contract for tractor supply, is my understanding?
On tractor supply, there was never a contract. You're correct. And we submitted a letter about that, you know?
Recently, to try to ratify it, but again, after the fact.
And all we were saying is, we have a contract on Payne, but you don't have a tractor supply. Do you want us to keep on doing this work or not? And.
Who authorized you to continue work at tractor supply after, after the fact that it stopped at, at Payne?
We had been working with the food service. Initially, we were giving the bond work for the food service. And then we started with that new, new facility and it didn't go anywhere. And we didn't, we just left it alone. We didn't charge a penny for it either. And then they bought into this property and we started to do that. It's just, I could tell that there was not a decision made yet. But I can tell you that whenever I heard tractor supply, I stopped working on Payne Warehouse. I didn't continue working on it, I stopped, okay?
So I'll go back to my question. What, what was your work done at tractor supply?
The food service called us to start to measure it and start to go, you know, and finish that project.
Let's go back to the Payne, to the Payne Warehouse, because that's what you're billing for, yeah? What, what work was on your part done that merits the $57,000?
Okay.
Give me, if you can give us a detail as to what work was, was done to merit the $57,000 that you're?
Architectural fees, $43,000. Architectural fee is $43,000.
For example, we've got a demolition plan with a write-up that goes with it. We've got a site plan that shows the food service area. And then this was going to be for the repairs. And then, I'm not sure what this area is for, and this is the one that doesn't have a slab where the buses were going to be stored. So we laid all that out.
And so you were never asked prior to buying that building, the Payne, you weren't asked to, like, just give a professional, like, eyeball on how much it was going to take to remodel that or redo it? It was not until they bought it that they came to you?
I believe there was an engineer that was hired to do a survey, but I was not part of that, so I'm not sure who it was. And, and then we were asked to sort on this and we got a contract to do, to do this work. So, so this is a floor plan. Be sure, we're showing one elevation, but we actually had several, several options before one was selected.
So pretty much what you're telling us is, the architectural fee is your drawings on, on that building and those are the $43,000?
That's correct.
And, and I don't mean to, and forgive me if I'm being a stickler about this, right? But I'm trying to do my best to make sure that the district is not put in a position where they're paying for stuff that is alleged to be done and only now we're showing what's been done. And this is my point. And, you know, we have an audience here and it's, and it's a point to be made. There's work that's done two years ago, over 700 days ago. Then we're presented with an invoice dated July 17, 2025, with reported work, and then we're being shown these plans right here at the board workshop. My point is just this. Is there a way to verify those plans were done at the time that were reported to be done? Or is, or were those plans done last week or the week before when we submitted this invoice? And I'm not, and it's more a rhetorical question, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but what I'm trying to do is articulate to the board the problem Rio Grande has since I came in to this district in January, which is, we continue to get bills and we continue to get invoices for work that was done two, three years ago, and we're in the same situation again, right in July, that we were back in February. My only point is that this is something this board needs to get a control of, because we cannot be doing this. If work was done at the, and this is a point to vendors too. If you're a vendor for the district and you've done work, submit your invoices, because you're not going, you run the risk of not being paid because of these situations. And so maybe those plans were done 700 days ago when the work was done. My only point is just that it puts the district in a very perilous situation to come and try to pay an invoice that's two years old with work that we can't actually verify with people who are not here to speak for it. And, so.
Let me say a little bit more. I, I wasn't going to charge for this at all, okay? But when, when the contract. But when the contract was not done for tractor supply, and I knew I was not going to do it, then I said, okay, I'm going to submit this.
And I don't know if that makes it any better, Mr. Elfino, to be honest. No, it's free. I would, I mean, you can put this for payment at the meeting, and y'all can decide as a board where to move with it or not, or how we move forward with it.
Do we need to terminate, Mr. Ramírez? I know we had discussed that. Do we need to terminate?
So we do need to terminate the services, because he currently has an active contract, and you are correct, there's an active contract for pain, there's no work being done for that, that contract, if the board's not going to move forward with that project, that contract should be legally terminated, correct?
Now, the tractor supply, I did just as much work.
And tractor supply, there was no contract, is my understanding?
And I'm not going to charge that, okay?
So then the recommendation?
It's going to be up to the board to decide.
Would be, or at least this is our suggestion, right? We take it back to, as an action item, but that would be, to first and foremost, would be to terminate the contract that he does have with him.
That would be a separate item for the invoice.
A separate item, correct. And after we do that, then it gives us ample, or the board ample, time to decide what is it that y'all are going to do with that payment that is being requested? Okay, then we'll go ahead and do that. Thank you, Mr. Garza. Moving to item 4G. Consider and take possible action on pay application number 24 from Gerlock Builders for Gruia Middle School. Y'all have any questions on that amount?
Where are we at with Gruia Middle School, if I can ask? Like, have we turned over keys? Have we...
They've completed the work. They're working on the punch list. The school district has moved into the buildings, and they're still in progress. But, and even after all of this, these pay applications are paid, we're still holding a little over $2 million, so...
I heard, I mean, and I know we visited the campus, and back then, there were still some issues at the cafeteria area, where some of the lines had not been brought down, so we had to connect warmers, and so has that happened? We start school on Monday. Y'all have to realize, Monday, we start school.
Yes, sir.
We need a place to warm food for kids. And if we're going to start the year off like that, guess what? I'm going to, we're going to hear it from our community, as to why we're in that situation, when the last board meeting, we talked about turning over on July 28, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
We're August 5 today, and we still have yet to turn it over. So, I mean, I think we deserve answers, and I think that we were going to ask our legal to see what ramifications, just like they charge us for stuff when we're late, is there anything that we can benefit from the companies that will reimburse us any money for the late act on that?
We need to review the contract, there might be liquidated damages clause in there, but I need to, from my understanding, is this project has been overrun more than just right now. I don't know what kind of actions the board has taken in the past that would ratify that, that wouldn't allow us to collect liquidated damages. And I don't know what the overruns have been, whether they're contract days that are in the contract for bad weather, things like that, that allows them that. So it doesn't mean that we get it automatically, it just means there's a lot of work to look at, if we want to consider that route.
So the cafeteria is still having any issues? Have they completed the cafeteria?
I'm going to get the contractor, too.
The cafeteria, we have not been told that all the equipment has been taken back. So the water line is coming back, that we have to bring down, and that's where the ice was...
Okay.
They haven't told us if they set it in place.
When you say they haven't set it in place, it would be who? Your plumbing company that you contract with, or us?
No. The school has not set it in the place where they want it. Once they put it in that place, or bring it, the line's right there. All I have to do is bring it down, connect it, and run the line. They had it in another area. There's a change order from Mission Restaurant Supply to the school district to put everything in place, bring the other equipment from the old school, and set it in place. Once it's set in place, now I can bring down the electrical hammer cup to the warmers, bathrooms...
But when will that happen? We start school on Monday?
Mr. Ramírez, we just signed that PO, and I think we just signed that this morning. So that is getting done. I'm not sure, Mr....
My question to you would be, is it going to be ready for Monday?
For Monday. Doctor Salinas, what would be the estimated time to get that in place, and is it going to be there for Monday?
So as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, we confirm that Friday, possibly.
Okay.
We do have a contingency plan ready for Monday, in case it doesn't happen, the kids are ill. So if we're open Friday, that's what we'll do.
I mean, but the thing is, things like this shouldn't be happening. Like, why do we have to be going through stuff like this, when we're working on a brand-new campus, and we knew we had a deadline, and we know that our kids are going back on Monday, and yet, we still take it very nonchalant, like, oh, no big deal, like, no problem, I mean, we've got time? No. School starts on Monday, and our kids need their services on Monday, not two, three days later. So we need to, I don't know, I don't, I mean, that's, and I know that's the way we worked all throughout history, but you know what? Things need to change.
As soon as they put that equipment in there, I'm ready to put those people who do the work, okay? They set it in place, I'll hook them up.
And I guess a question, another question, as I know that Dr. Arreza was asking me. How long ago were we allowed to bring this material in? Because I know y'all were working in the cafeteria. How long ago were we given the okay?
If they set it in place tomorrow, everything, if they set everything in place tomorrow, by Saturday, I'll have everything ready.
Correct. But my question was, was it six months ago that we were allowed to do this, to bring, how many months ago, what was the time? Was it, when did y'all let us know that it was okay to bring it back, to bring it in?
Since the first time y'all started moving in the equipment.
Which would be, Mr. Lopez, so it's been a while, you're talking about months?
That has been a while.
Okay.
That it's passed that they bring all the...
So it could have been lost in transition.
Immediate issue. Immediate issue is...
It's six months ago.
We had a meeting onsite, prior to then bringing in equipment. Figure superintendent was there, head team was there, a lot of kitchen equipment people were there, and we told them, bring it in. You bring it in, I've got to hook it up. We were asking for some practical kitchen for the kitchen and fine arts more than six months ago.
I hope the community knows that, we'll make sure to let them know who forgot to bring in the equipment for the cafeteria.
Everything you need, bring it in. Right now, we're still pending the POS system. I can't connect anything. If it's not there, I cannot connect. I need it there for me to connect.
So in order for it to happen, it would need to happen tomorrow, to get it ready by Saturday? So if they wait till Friday, then you're not going to get it done till probably five days later?
If they put it on Friday, I'll get it to work Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, thank you.
It's all about the kids, that's all there is to it. Now, there was another issue, and that was not, had nothing to do with the school, had nothing to do with us. The fire marshal for the county of Star quit three weeks ago. So we've been asking them, since three weeks, and we've sent emails out that, hey, I need the final fire marshal inspection, or else, guess what? Your kids cannot start school on Monday.
We were asking them to do that.
But we heard today that tomorrow, the new fire marshal will be on school to do the final testing.
Okay, perfect.
Okay? So as soon as that is done in the morning, basically, I'm not going to my office, I'm coming straight over here to meet with my superintendent and the other people that are going to be running the test, make sure everything goes good. If there's any questions, anything happens, it will be taken care of that same day or the next day, and we'll bring the fire marshal back out to do the test again.
Okay, thank you. I know we were discussing that today, so thank you for that update.
But as far as the school, the school is 100% complete.
Okay.
We're working on punch list items. We've been working with Elfino on those punch list items. He brings them in, we start doing them. We've gotten the old ones, and we use them on the ones that were not done back then. So we...
Yeah, because there's quite a bit, there's a long list of the punch list. And from what I'm looking at, was it July 22, the last updated punch list that we have? Okay.
Yesterday, I was turned in, and I had to review it for this that my superintendent checked off. The items that were complete. We went through that with him, and I went through with him the first time, and so tomorrow morning, I'll be submitted to him, these are complete and done with. That includes administration, eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade. And I think, believe we had already turned in the fine arts and the kitchen already. So we'll be turning those in. Right now, we're working all punch list items in the gym, and we should be complete on those. I'm shooting for the end of this week to get it done. And then after that, it's just going to be the back punch. Here we'll check. Whatever's not done, that he comes up, oh, this is not satisfactory, I don't like this, I don't like that, then we go back and fix those.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr....
I was just going to say, we can reiterate the sense of urgency that's necessary with Mission.
We definitely will. We'll make that phone call tomorrow.
To reiterate the, yeah, again, sense of urgency that we need for this, the immediate issue is that, right? The immediate issue is, we need that before end of fire marshal.
Correct. Well, we'll make that call tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. And the rest, the other one is item 4I, I'm sorry, I skipped item 4H. Consider and take possible action on pay application number 25 from Gerlock Builders for Gruia Middle School. And that is another amount as well. So by the time we pass these, Mr. Ramirez, they should be completed, and it should be, everything should be paid out?
I don't know if that's the last one or not. I mean, these are just like regular pay-ups, that you're paying as opposed to the project, but yeah. They should be completed, I'm sure.
Those two, and that's it? We've got two more?
44, 25, and 26.
Which are the ones that we're bringing in today? Correct.
Very specific, 27, 28. 27, it would be the final, and then 28, it would be the...
Okay, and that should be the last one. And when will those be submitted?
These two, some of these have been done this week.
Okay.
We received them in the office yesterday or the day before.
Okay.
So normally, by the time it makes it to the agenda, it's because our relevant parties have signed off that that part of the work has been completed.
Do you have any questions on that item? We'll go ahead and move on to item 4I. Consider and take possible action on pay application number 26 from Gerlock Builders for Gruia Middle School.
Is there a reason why they bring so many pay applications at once, or is that normal for them to bring? Because I see that it's May, June.
I had been, I had been holding them. I had been holding them until they got further along on the completion. So I didn't submit them back to him, because...
And that's what I mean by, by the time it's here, it's because the relevant parties have verified that it's done. So Mr. Garza held it, because he probably believed there was still something to be done before it was their payment.
And even after payment of application 26, there's still $2,100,000, a little over $2,100,000 still left that we're holding in retainage.
Till after they turn in the whole?
Yes. And as they finish, they're going to be taking some of that money, but we're going to be keeping some of it until everything's done. There's going to be a balance until it's all gone.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to item 4J. Consider and take possible action on Gruia Middle School substantial completion certificate or the punch list, and that's what we were talking about previously.
I know the substantial completion, it's an AIA form. We attached the punch list for the project, so it's got the plans and all the write-up on it.
And so it's not uncommon for a project of this size, if there was any board members that wanted to go out there and walk it with Mr. Garza, or is anybody to go over any punch list items, we can create a form notice. So you ought to make your way out there, you can walk the facility, get a tour, check it out for yourselves, as you all consider the last pay-ups coming up.
I know Gruia Middle School principal is here, and they've been there this past few weeks. Ms. Rios, how does it look, Ms. Rios, as to the finished product so far? And be honest, I mean, be honest with us as to what you've seen. Y'all have spent more time there than we have, and y'all are more detailed. I know that you're very detailed about what's missing, or what's not missing. Can you give us a little detail, a little, quick?
It's a beautiful building, and we...
Ms. Rios, can I hear from you, please?
There's still things, and again, for that, for that, you have a lot of...
Mr. Marine, can you go out there tomorrow, just to make sure what it is that these people have been seeing? They've been there for the past week and a half or two, just to make sure...
He is on top of everything, he's very great job. He stays in constant communication with me. I know I talked to Fabián, one of her biggest concerns here was the seventh-grade hallway in the AC. Fabián already told me that it had nothing to do with the actual unit, it was more of the controls, they already fixed it. So I am going out there tomorrow.
And the only reason I ask is I see no sense of urgency? Like, really? I feel like there's no sense of urgency? And that's why I asked Ms. Rios to let us know, because I think that we've been too laid back, and we've let too many things slide, and, because we're good people, we're good, but it gets to a point where it's frustrating to hear stuff like that, you know? So for me, go tomorrow, I mean, I'll direct it to Ms. Garza, send Marine out there, make sure that things that aren't working, to let these guys know, that way you can address them. Because Monday, we start school.
Correct. Our kids are there. Yes, sir. That'll happen, thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to item 4K. Consider and take possible action on renewal agreement with Form K12 for the automation of forms and workforce. Thank you, Mr. Garza.
In the past, the district submitted all business office forms manually and paper, and the district had an overreliance on paper. Many times, lost forms were a result of this process. All these forms required multiple approvals and workflows, making it more difficult to streamline the process with less paper. These forms were completed manually, which was time-consuming and prone to errors. Transitioning to a digital and sustainable, paperless environment, all-in-one, user-friendly place is more efficient, since paper processes are streamlined. With this platform, Form K12, the district has efficient management of forms, workflows, and signatures across departments, campuses, and the business office. Some forms have been automated in the past, in the past years, include the travel requests, donation forms, vendor forms, decision-making forms, payroll changes, forms, fundraiser approval forms, student activity check requests, the cash transmital form, vendor payment approval forms, the noncompliant purchasing form, supplemental health insurance claim forms, grant payment request consent forms, and the following are in the process, time reports for regular and supplement pay, which will be launched in September. And we just did a launch, a soft launch, with two campuses and one department, and they are very happy with the results, and so we're looking forward to implement that. We're also trying to implement the employee change of status form and many others. The cost of this platform is $44,795, which has already been included in the budget.
Is this for you?
Yes.
If there are no questions, we're going to move on to item 4L. Consider and take possible action on 806 Technologies, Title 1, title 1, ones and four and others, ones and five, I'm sorry, and others.
The goal of this is to ensure compliance with federal program requirements under Titles 1, 2, 3... The goal of this is to ensure compliance with federal program requirements under titles one, two, three, four, and five by streamlining, documenting, monitoring, and reporting processes. The use of title one crate will improve program oversight, facilitate collaboration among district and campus staff, and ensure readiness for state and federal audits. Expected results, improve compliance with federal and state requirements, centralized audit, ready storage, increase efficiency in monitoring and reporting across all titles, and has collaboration between district and campus staff, reduce risk of noncompliance, and time savings of staff through streamlined workflows. Funding title one.
If there are no questions on that item, we'll go ahead and move on to item four M. Considering take possible action on eight oh six technologies, title one, compliance.
The goal of this platform will be to ensure effective planning, implementation, and monitoring of the federally funded programs to improve the student academic achievement, particularly for students identified as disadvantaged by utilizing a comprehensive and compliant planning, planning platform to acquire and implement eight oh six technologies, plan for learning as a strategic, as a strategic tool that supports the development, alignment, and documentation of the campus and district improvement plans.
So, Mr. Lopez, is this just kind of better communication for the campus improvement and the district that feeds into the district improvement plan?
Yes.
Because right now, we are using principals. It's a what? It's just a local, it's a developed, locally developed. So by the time we get the campuses together and then combine them into our district improvement plan for that amount of money, that would save us quite a bit of time. And then, of course, if we have any audits, it will prepare us. We will have that in place.
And you have to remember that now every document is required to be placed on our district webpage, if I'm not mistaken. So that would make it a lot easier to get it on there.
They would, yes, they would edit in real time.
And I believe it has to be in both languages, English and Spanish, and that's time consuming also, so.
Okay.
That would be something that.
So we don't have any further questions on that item? We'll go ahead and move to item four N. Consider and take possible action beyond the Bell program for school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
This proposal is for beyond the Bell program that will provide a safe, educational, and nurturing environment for students in pre-kindre through kindergarten. The program will reinforce and complement the educational goals of the school, providing additional learning opportunities that align with the curriculum. Engaging activities will be designed to stimulate cognitive and emotional growth, including arts and crafts, storytelling, and educational interactive games. This program will be implemented in every elementary campus, including advanced. The estimate cost is two hundred thousand dollars, and it will be funded through the S E program.
And that's just for kinder?
Pre-kindre and kinder, however, it has been mentioned that we are considering the need to expand it to the upper grades.
And so that cost would increase.
This past year, Dr. Arredar, it went up to two hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred. So we ended up expending thirty, about thirty-four thousand extra.
Adding all the.
Adding all the way to fifth grade, correct.
All the way to fifth grade.
Correct.
We used to have.
So that would, that would probably be the, what we would do this year as well.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people asking. A lot of teachers, a lot of people that work at the district, they need the extra help.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to item four O. Consider and take possible action on contract delivery method for Rio Grande City High School.
I'm sorry, would we have to modify that because it's in consent agenda?
Would we modify that? It's basically, we're letting them know the beyond the bell that is from pre-k to third grade, I mean, to, to pre-k to kinder. But what we want to do is take it all the way to fifth grade. Do we have to modify that?
Or amend it?
Yeah, just put, just put in there what, what it is you're, you're gonna want to do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's part of your recommendation.
And we have the numbers already, the cost, the, how much?
We'll go ahead and put closer about two fifty, just in case. We don't want to, you know, to stay within. We're gonna move on to item four O. Consider and take possible action on contract delivery method for Rio Grande City High School drainage system. Administration is asking that we go out for a competitive C O proposal or a C S P for this item. And I don't know, Mr. Lopez, you want to share anything on what's going on with that drainage system at Rio Grande High School?
Yeah, just to let y'all know, we do have the specs and we do have the engineering plans already. So we're just looking for, to go out on the C S P.
What's the problem at Rio High School still, yeah?
We're still, we've had that issue for years. When it rains there by the Kate Department, everything goes into the gym. And once it goes into the gym, it makes its way into the main floor and through the hallway into offices.
Hadn't it been addressed before, Marine?
We've, we've tried different.
It's been years that I've been hearing this, but I thought it had already been addressed.
Yeah, we've tried different things, locally, in-house. We just, every time it rains, we, we end up having issues. So we went the route of getting an engineer, getting plans, getting specs. So that's, we've never gone to this extent. We're, we're asking for, you know, this delivery method.
So it has to be done? Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Do we have any questions, further questions? Okay. We're gonna move on to item four P. Consider and take possible action on requisitions five thousand and over, and they are there for your review on page one oh nine. We did have an additional that we were gonna bring in to y'all for review as well. And the reason that we're bringing this new one to you all, I know that you all, as a board, had requested that for maintenance, for all the supplies that we request on a monthly basis, and we could do that maybe quarterly, maybe. So that is what is being done, so we don't have to bring it back on a monthly basis, and that's what you'll see before you. And if there's any questions, and I think you will have these questions, this is, this will be contained at a district level, and we will have the proper, what is it? The, the proper inventory list as to where it's going out, you know, the amounts that are going out to each campus from now on. If there are no questions, we'll go ahead and move to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Lopez, thank you. And that would be item five A. Consider and take possible action on amending the twenty-five, twenty-six compensation plan, Dr. Salina.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Ms. Garza Superintendent of Schools, the first item is the proposed amendment for the twenty-five, twenty-six compensation plan. The first section you see there, we do have two campuses that are acquiring facilitators for the lack of assistant principals, applicants, and to fill those vacancies. So what the district's proposing tonight, the administration's position is those teachers will remain on a teacher contract. We have a facilitator title. And we've been very clear about what HB two states when it has to be, you know, a teacher of record is a code eighty-seven on P E M S, and that follows the education code. And we're asking for four hours of instruction. So we want to be transparent about it. So we're asking for the five thousand dollar allotment for those teachers from district, from one ninety-nine, so we don't have to submit that to.
What, what campuses are these?
This, right now, we have Ringel Elementary, A T T Elementary, and Dr. Mario Ramirez Elementary.
Have we, have we addressed all the campuses already with the needs or not? What were we missing?
Dr. Mario Ramirez, Guria High School.
And due to the fact that people are not applying, or we just don't have the individuals out there that are readily available?
We.
Or what is the, the holdup?
So we.
They've been asking and asking and asking.
So we, uh-huh, we opened the vacancy to the outside, Mr. Penya, for the first time in, in many, many years. And we did have two applicants. I know that some of the principals vetted those applicants, interviewed. We didn't proceed with them. So we're, we're, we're still pursuing to fill that vacancy at Dr. Mario. And we have a vacancy at Guria High School.
A vacancy for assistant principal that is open?
Correct.
Currently open?
Yes, sir.
And we haven't had any applicant?
No, sir. So the, the first section is the, the teachers that did fill those vacancies, we feel that they should get the five thousand dollar raise, but we want to be transparent and not mingle with that HB two guideline. So we're gonna go ahead and put that from the district funds, that's what we're trying to say, so we don't mess with that code eighty-seven and the four hours of instruction. On the second portion, you see three transportation positions that we'd like to reclassify, the full-time allotment.
Can I go back?
Yes, sir.
To our, our Dr. Mario Ramirez and, and Guria High School. School starts on Monday, and Monday are very hectic. First days of schools are very hectic. I think that was the biggest headache for me as a principal. Will we, will we be able to get somebody out there at least to facilitate while the beginning of year? And then eventually get somebody running there as assistant principal or facilitators, whatever, we're gonna get out there? Because it is concerning, especially when we promote safety, 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 but yet we don't have the, the, the supervision that's necessary at each campus. So I encourage y'all to look at that, and we'll move forward, moving forward with that.
And that's exactly, Mr. Penya, the game plan. I know the superintendent has scheduled administrators throughout the district for several campuses. And we did meet this, this afternoon on the contingency plan for Monday, in case we don't fill those vacancies, on how we're gonna handle that long term. On the next section, members of the board, we have three positions, a white fleet attendant, the school bus fleet manager, and the substation coordinator. These positions have been allotted by the board. We just want to reclassify them into mechanic positions and a transportation supervisor. It's budget neutral, doesn't cost anything. We're just bringing it to the board, we're transferring that F T E over with a different title. These advertisements would go from within. There's more leeway with a mechanic position than there would with the previous positions. Also, the reclassification of the high school conjunto teacher and the elementary folklorico teacher. We did put that out for, for, for several weeks. We did not receive any applicants that were certified. So we went ahead and we're asking, tonight respectfully asking that these positions be reclassified as high school conjunto instructor, elementary folklorico dance instructor, off the teacher pay scale and back to the admin one scale at a budget neutral F T E allotment. They've been allotted by the board, we're just shifting them over to, to the admin one scale.
What campuses?
It's not one campus, Mr. Penya. It's gonna be a scheduled, the superintendent's made it clear that she wants all the elementary kiddos involved in the folklorico, and the conjunto will be focused at the high school. So it'll be all elementaries and for the folklorico and all high schools for the conjunto. As scheduled, yes. Similar to what we're doing with the elementary music. On the second portion of this amendment, you do see a child nutrition accountant. We'd like to bring in a child nutrition accountant funded by one oh one. We're asking for the midpoint at fifty-five, seven two zero. This is an admin two. The speech, I'm sorry, the special ed director did meet with us on overages, on numbers, on caseloads, and we're looking at a speech pathology and a speech assistant, both grant funded through two twenty-four. That's important to note, that's two twenty-four grant funded. We did have employees who left the district at, at the two twenty-four grant. And we'd like to add those two positions through the grant fund.
I believe they lost a behavior specialist, I mean, no?
Yes, sir.
Today?
Yes, sir. We're meeting with him tomorrow morning on the game plan on that. The, as, on the, I want to, just for the record, you do see an accountant at the business office. We're removing that. We feel strongly, in meeting with the CFO, that removing that position, we're good. So I will make a record of that in a minute. So we're not asking for that position. We're, we're good with the one oh one C N P accountant. On the next one, you see a reshuffle of, again, the same concept as we did in transportation. We have a vacancy, an F T E allotment, a P R graphic designer. We'd like to move that to multimedia specialist, again, at no cost. That position's already been allotted for, and we just want to reclassify that position. And the last one is the purchasing agent. We did ask the board early on in the budget year for midpoint of admin four. We're asking the board for an additional fourteen thousand, one seventy-six for a recommendation that will be made on Tuesday. If you add these together, it's a total, well, we removed the, remember, the child, the accountant at the business office. It's a total, we're gonna ask for a total of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-six. And the reason we came up with that number is because you remove the fund at the C N P of one oh one, obviously, they're, they're self-funded, and the two grant positions at two twenty-four, which give you a total of twenty-four thousand, one seventy-six from one ninety-nine. Any questions on that?
And so just to clarify, the purchasing agent asked for more money, and, or why are we going up?
So, good question, Dr. Barada. So we, when we first asked for the position from the board, we budgeted at the midpoint, which is fifteen years of experience. The candidate that we are pursuing does bring, I believe it's twenty-four years of experience from another district. And that's why it's, it's, it's over the midpoint.
When you talk about midpoint, you're talking about salary wage or?
Yes, sir. So every, good question, sir. Every pay grade has a min, a mid, and a max. So in this position, if you look at the purchasing agent, the midpoint of a, of a, of an admin four is seventy thousand, eight two four. That's admin four. Again, this candidate has, in the interview, has brought over twenty-four years' experience from a, from a district in the, in the same role. So it's a midpoint, fifteen years' experience, yes. So when the board allotted this position, we only asked for the midpoint budget. So obviously, we're, if we do bring this individual in, we'd be over budget, so we can't bring him in unless we allot that fund.
Are there any questions on that item? Then let's go ahead and move on to item five B. Consider and take possible action on the twenty-five, twenty-six employee handbook.
Thank you. This is just standard employee handbook that we work every year, it's a standard TASB. We emailed you a copy. We didn't want to use all that paper, so we emailed you a copy. I do have a copy on hand, in case you want to see it. But again, very confident, standard TASB language.
We'll move on to item five C. Consider and take possible action on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six employee sick leave handbook.
Again, the sick leave handbook comes to the board every year for approval. We'd like to continue this, this, this.
Nothing changed?
Nothing changed, no, ma'am.
This is a one-time donation, that I thought?
Yes, sir.
It's a one-time donation, and you're in it for the rest of your career?
Yes, sir.
Correct. It was a dramat, something dramatic within your health or anything like that? You're able to help?
And, and just to be transparent, that's a good question, Mr. Penya. We, I believe it was last year in twenty twenty-four, and I believe it's on page. It's on page, it's on section three of the handbook. And you look at two amendments in July of twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four. What we did was, the handbook created by the original administrators who drafted the sick leave bank mentioned that September thirtieth, if the bank were to hit rock bottom, every employee on the hand, on the sick leave bank should donate two days to remain in the, in the sick leave bank. The system we created is that, once an F T E is allotted for, like we have been coming to you for positions, that position's been allotted for. If that employee, who is a candidate for the sick leave bank, is an allotted F T E, then that money is used to go from the F T, E F T allotment into the sick leave bank. That's to avoid going back and asking everyone for days again. Correct. So that's an amendment that, and we're asking for, obviously, to continue that.
If there are no other questions, we'll move on to item five D. Consider and take possible action on the twenty-five, twenty-six employee compensation schedule.
Thank you. So attached, you see the compensation schedule. What this is, is the compensation plan was approved, and we amended our hiring scale. So what you see there is a hiring scale for new employees. If you see the starting salary for a teacher is forty-eight five. If you recall, what we presented to the board and was approved was a thousand dollar raise for teachers from zero to two. So to avoid a compression between a zero-year teacher and a one-year teacher, we took half the raise that was allotted to teachers in the district and added it to our compensation schedule. So zero to two went up five hundred dollars. Two and three was half of the twenty-five hundred, which is, is twelve fifty. And then five plus was five thousand, so we increased it by twenty-five hundred for each, for each years of experience. Again, this is only for new hires, okay? And we did the same thing, if you look at your. So each min, mid, max has been adjusted, half of the allotted raise for current employees.
The people with zero experience, that's the starting salary, right? For any teacher that comes in new, 48.5?
Yes.
Comparable to neighboring districts, we're still way below.
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, we are.
So we need to work on a plan that will help us make this a little healthier, in order to keep, you know, so we won't lose teachers and attract, you know, good teachers as well. So I think we have to work on something that will alleviate this, where we don't become a revolving door, where they just come and train and go find a district that pays them more a year or two later.
Yeah.
We need to retain those teachers, so trying to work on something that will help us with the retention.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to item 5E. Consider and take possible action on local policy FNCE.
FNCE is a policy that addresses, I'm sure everyone is aware, the no-cell phone news. And the policy attached in your handbook is the recommended local Tasby. It's very broad, very general. In meeting with the superintendent, what's going to be important here is administrative guidelines, which she's put out, and that's our recommendation. Very, very interestingly, at least since I've been at HR, anytime there's a legislative update, they can be till September 1 to implement. They're telling us this needs to be in by the first day of school.
Which would be Monday?
Which would be Monday, which will hopefully be approved on Tuesday, so for the record, I will be one day late, yes. And I notified Tasby about that, so.
If there are no questions, we'll move on to item 5F. Consider and take possible action on local policy EFB.
Thank you. EFB, similar movement here. The legislative made it real clear, we need this policy approved by the first day of school. This deals with instructional materials, it was Senate Bill 13. What the legislation's, at least in my perspective, is they're trying to regulate library materials, and the first order of business is form an advisory committee, not form an advisory committee. Our recommendation, members of the board, is not to. We feel very comfortable and confident in our campus administrators, our principals, and our librarians, assistant principals do a great job in dealing with parents, committee members that may be upset with any library materials that may not be to their liking. So we're asking, respectfully asking, that we take the position of not having an advisory committee. But I do want to point out that even by law, if there's a 20, I think it's a 20% collection of signatures petition, then you would have to create that committee. So either way, we, again, the reason we're requesting to opt out is because we feel very confident in our campus principals, our administrators, and our librarians that do a good job, and speaking to parents, committee members. And I'm not going to take you through the whole policy, but you see a lot of, there's procedures for record-keeping, a parent can ask what my child asked for, how long, did they keep it? All these records are ready, available. Ms. Benitez made it, last board meeting, the board did approve the agreement with Region 1 with our library services, so she's working real close with them to get the latest and greatest information for you.
There are no questions, we'll move on to item 5G. Consider and take possible action on naming tax ratification elections administrator.
Members of the board, we respectfully ask that we name an election administrator for the proposed tax ratification election. We, as, our recommendation is to stay in-house, and Mr. Marin Lopez would be the appointed administrator for the election, tax ratification election.
We're good. I think Mr. Lopez has the experience. He's run elections before, and I think that he'd be the person to be in charge, be the right person to be in charge of that tax ratification election, if we do go through it.
So I was asking if he was going to get extra pay for it, a stipend or something? He volunteered from the bottom of his heart.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. If there are no questions, move on to item 5H. Consider and take possible action on Lasso technology lending grant funding allocation.
So before you have the Lasso grant, which we have approximately $200,000 that we need to expend, the focus here is device for our kids, we're looking at Chromebooks, we're about $400 each, and staff development for our employees. So we respectfully ask for the approval of this expenditures of funds. Obviously, where we buy our Chromebooks and our materials for our children are on the cooperative or by board, and of course, we'll go through the processes with business office.
We'll go ahead, if there are no questions, move on to item 5A. Consider and take possible action on music. First, assessment software.
Assessment software presented before you is for the band, music, choir, all fine arts departments. This is for our TIA teachers that have qualified for TIA. We're renewing that assessment, we're looking at about $18,000. Again, this is from the TA allotment, TIA allotment, so there is no cost to the district.
14, no?
I believe it did, that's a good point, yes, sir, but I think it did go up. In meeting with Ms. Benitez, did it go up? It is $14,000, okay. $14,000, yes. Yes, $14,000. We're looking to renew that.
If there are no questions, let's move on to item 5J. Consider and take possible action on mentor program allotment budget and training proposal.
At the last board meeting in July, our board graciously approved our mentor allotment. This is the allotment that expired on the grant, and we wanted to continue locally through TIA funds, and we budgeted for 10 teachers, which it was about $7,500 that was approved. We're looking to expand, and we're excited to go over 40 teachers, and we're looking at $37,000 to continue this program. Again, it's TIA budget monies, and we're excited to expand to that amount.
It's on page 130, in case y'all are wondering.
I understand that, but how do we go about selecting these mentor teachers, and how are they based on experience, quality of work, I mean, combination of everything?
Yes, ma'am.
The selection of the mentors, we started three to go, and originally it was basically special for recommendations, but as we went through the program and we trained our mentors, now we look at designated teachers, teachers who have a data track that you know, the test room, by the fact that they have gone through the certification through Region 1, and they have to keep up the certification.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
And there are no questions, we'll move on to item 5K. Consider and take possible action on agreement between RGC GISD and Starr County Juvenile Justice Center for meals, school year 2025, 2026.
Respectfully recommending to approve this agreement, as last year extended this agreement with the juvenile system and the, I believe it's Immaculate, oh, that's the next item, I'm sorry. So yes, that's just an approval from last year, extension for the meals.
If there are no questions, move on to item 5L. Consider and take possible action on agreement between RGC GISD and the Immaculate Conception School for meals, school year 25, 26.
Thank you. Similar to the previous item, this is for the Immaculate Conception Church, and we're asking to extend this contract for this year.
Okay, there are no questions, we will move on to, thank you, Dr. Salinas.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move on to item 6, board governance. You have before you the approval of board minutes from July 29, 2025. No items to take into executive session. Ms. Gonzalez, any public comments on non-agenda items? Thank you, ma'am. And just want to make a couple announcements first and foremost. I want to thank all principals, administrators, directors, everyone that is here today. I know it's been a very, very busy week, and even though it has been a busy week, you are here, you showed up, so we want to thank you for that. And I know that you're giving it your all to receive our kiddos on Monday, so once again, thank you. I don't know if the board wants to say anything before I go on to the upcoming events.
Ms. Garza, I want to congratulate you and your staff. Yesterday's event was phenomenal. I mean, we heard so many compliments, especially from those people that never had the opportunity to participate in such an event, such as our maintenance workers, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers. You could see all smiles on their faces yesterday. Principals went out of their way to get their staff out there. I mean, the level of fun you all were having out there was exceptional, and of course, you've given back to your district as well with your gift cards. You know, that was something that, I know that you all are very giving. I've been there for the longest time, and they're very giving. And Ms. Garza, you have a great heart too, for your giver, that you like to give on your part. So congratulations, I hope that we can double this next year.
We will.
And start thinking about a bigger center or event.
Principals, we've got to start thinking about something bigger.
Thinking today, starting today.
Thank you.
All right, so congratulations, congratulations, principals. Ms. Basan, great, great idea with the Business Expo, all right? So I commend you on that, ma'am. Thank you.
I just want to tell everybody best of luck. We're very, very proud of everybody. We wish you the best of luck and hope everything runs very smoothly, and I'm sure if it doesn't, you all will find a way to make it run smoothly. So best of luck on the first day of school.
Anyone else? We're good? All right. Just a couple of upcoming events. August 7th, we have the Driscoll Back to School Bash here at the MPC from 9 to 12 o'clock. There's a lot of free things that are going to be given away. And then on August 8th, we have our Back to School Bash from 9 to 12 at John and Oliver Nohosa, with a lot of free things to be given away as well. So once again, thank you, go home and get some rest now.
Before we go, just making sure, the Driscoll, is that open to businesses here at the MPC, or is that just Driscoll? Because I had some people.
It was not promoted from the district. We do support them, and we allow them to use our facilities, but it's not something that we promoted. My understanding is that they were, I think they had a QR code that if they wanted to sign up, then they were able to do so. What was that, Ms. Salinas?
Okay. Okay.
That come with Driscoll. So it's not anything that we promoted as a district, it was Driscoll.
So pretty much, if the business wants to participate, they have to talk to Driscoll. Driscoll's running the show, they're doing their thing, okay? You, okay, you are just, they're renting or?
Where we're providing them the facilities.
And then for August 8th, the Back to School Bash, is that open for vendors?
That's not open for vendors.
That's not, just clarifying. I know I asked her if businesses could participate, she told me no, but I want to make sure that everybody else knows too.
Since. From within?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you, I wanted to make sure I clarified that.
Yes, ma'am, since we had the Business Expo, and it was a great success, thank you to all. You know, we decided not to bring in, or ask them to come back for our Back to School Bash, so, yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, good night, thank you.
Good night.